Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have to turn this way. We have a little bit different setup tonight due to the main portion of the agenda, which is the superintendent final interview questions. So I will turn this way and welcome everyone to the school committee Wednesday, May 22, 2013. I'd like to start off with public participation. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the committee? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go on to the minutes of meeting.
Good news.
Oh, sorry.
We have good news coming in right behind you.
The good news is coming in. Hi Cindy, how are you? Come on in. All right. So, next item on the agenda is good news. And I will start off with Cindy, welcome. Cindy, we wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for being a representative, the student representative to the Wareham School Committee for the 2012-2013 school year. Your input, your, you know, just being here and being part of each one of these meetings, putting up with all of us and enduring long meetings, but most importantly, providing us your input into, from the student perspective, has done a lot for this committee and we really appreciate your time and we wish you all the best to wherever you're going. So we do have a certificate for you that I'm gonna read. Certificate in recognition of Cindy Pham as student representative on the Wareham School Committee for the 2012-2013 school year and appreciation of your contributions to the school system, signed this 22nd day of May 2013. So we just wanna thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good job.
Where are you off to?
For me?
Yeah.
I was gonna stay.
No, school.
UMass Amherst.
UMass Amherst?
Yeah.
Great, studying?
Biology.
Biology. All right, well, we wish you all the best and thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other good news?
Foundation did a good job.
Well, do you wanna talk about that, Dr. Sylvia? All right. Under good news, I'll talk about, we had our spring annual Taste of Wareham event for the Wareham Foundation for Education. $6,000 was raised that evening. We gave out approximately $2,500 worth of mini-grants to teachers for some of their activities and twice annually, we give awards to teachers. So far, in the last three years, we've given out over $20,000 worth of grants to teachers for, to do projects that benefit the students of Wareham. So it was a great evening and your bartending skills came in very handy.
Thanks. Great. The only other good news is just because I just came from it, that Minnetonka Forest Elementary School today did an art auction today to benefit the art program at Minnet, which of course, the art program at Wareham needs help. And so, it was a great auction, some beautiful artwork from our elementary school students and we were able to go there and bid on your own students or what I heard, other students' artwork and fight it out with their parents. And during a silent auction, and then they moved on, I had to leave, but they went on to a live auction that had artwork from teachers and administrators from the district. So hopefully, it'll raise a lot of money tonight. So I thought that that was a great program and a great job that they did.
Good news.
Yes.
Sunday night, I attended the Decker spaghetti auction. Spaghetti dinner, yeah, well, they didn't auction off spaghetti. And they do an outstanding job. I'm proud to be an original Decker student 39 years ago and to see all the kids volunteering, I don't know how much money they made, but it was very-
A lot.
Very successful that each student brought in three or four items. There was a silent auction, a regular auction, and Cindy Sylvia is absolutely phenomenal as an auctioneer. I didn't think anyone could talk faster than their father, but it's possible. They did a great job and Dr. Sylvia was there also.
Just to follow up on what Kenny just said, I think when we think about the Decker auction and the foundation fundraiser, all of these things have in common that the community of Wareham gives every single vendor that we went to, every restaurant that we asked to provide food, donated the food. When the students from Decker go and ask for auction items, the members of this community step up and that's an excellent thing. They do support us with their help and their generosity. And so, I don't wanna forget that there are plenty of times that we talk about what we don't have and that we're looking for additional support, but the businesses of Wareham step up and help the schools and I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Any other good news? All right. When's graduation? That's good news, right?
Next Friday.
The 7th.
Right.
And the rain date's on the 8th.
Okay. So let's move on to the minutes of the meeting for May 8, 2013. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, but what was the date?
May 8.
Which one is that? All right, I'm sorry. I forgot it. I wasn't sure about, I see a May 9th and I wasn't sure if it was.
Yeah. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 4-0-0. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of May 9th.
So moved. That's the joint meeting with these selectmen, correct?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 4-0-0. The next item on the agenda is the interview superintendent final, uh, sorry.
Vote for our choice.
I don't know why I just keep passing by that. I apologize. Dr. Ravine, the next is the vote to participate in school choice.
Yes, I'd like to recommend to the school committee that the Wareham Public Schools continue as a choice district for the 2013-2014 school year and accept students from grades, kindergarten through grade 12, depending on class size, and that no students will be accepted to West Wareham Academy. The law requires a vote of the Wareham School Committee whether or not its district will accept school choice pupils prior to June 1st, 2013.
Right.
So I recommend that the school committee vote to accept choice.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 4-0-0. Great. Now, I'm not gonna even go on to the, am I right now to go on to the, okay. The next agenda item is the, is to interview the superintendent finalists. At 6:30, we will be interviewing Elise Franco's from the Old Rochester School System, but we will need to take a short recess until 6:30 for that to happen. We still do have one member that is missing who, he will be here at 6:30. But just so everyone knows who's watching this on TV, the way that the process is going to happen is each one of the school committees has a question that is the same for each candidate and has another question that's specific to each candidate. There is also opportunity for citizens of Wareham to log on, so this is being shown live on WCTV as well as streaming on Wareham Week. You are also able to do live blogging through Wareham Week. If we have time and if the questions are appropriate, then we will take those, we will ask those questions or a question of the candidate. So I encourage the community, if you do have a question, submit it through this process. If we do have time, we will ask it. If not, then we will try to follow up with an answer with a question that you might have. So with that, I will take a short recess until 6:30. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back and thank you for the folks that are in the audience. Again, this is our school committee meeting. We went through regular business and now we are back to go to the main part of our agenda, which is to interview the final candidates for the Wareham superintendent position. The first candidate that we have is Elise Franco's, so thank you very, very much for being here today. Thank you. I think you know all the committee members unless you want to introduce ourselves again.
I think I do know you. It's great to see you again.
All right, great. So if you can, we'll just start off with an opening statement that you want, you'd like to make.
Great. So I'm Elise Franco's, Dr. Elise Franco's, and I'm currently the Assistant Superintendent for the Old Rochester Public Schools, which are Marion, Bedopoiset, Rochester, in the Old Rochester Regional Junior High and High School. I'm your achievement candidate tonight. I have a track record for turning around schools that may be having some challenges around test data, around student achievement, so I look forward to telling you a little bit more about that as the evening goes on. I'm also someone who can find the money. If you look carefully at my references, one of the things that I'm very skillful with is writing grants. With our current paradigm in Old Rochester, we're actually four districts put together. So when I write grants, the Title I, the Title II, or the Race to the Top Grant, I write them four times. So exponential grant writing experience. I also work very skillfully with vendors. So one of the things that I can do is leverage our purchasing power so that if we get textbooks, lab equipment, supplies, many of those supplies come without a price. Another thing that I'm skillful with is working with partnerships and corporations and I look forward to talking a little bit about, more about that. Last of all, one of the things that I would bring to the Wareham Public Schools is that opportunity to restore faith and confidence in the excellent programming and the teachers that you have on board. And so I look forward to having that opportunity and I would be honored to be your next superintendent.
Thank you very, very much. So we'll start off with the first question from Dr. Cliff Sylvia.
Welcome.
Hi Cliff.
How are you?
I'm well, thanks.
This is the general question, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. People who are involved in education profession experience, experience some successes and some failures, some more public than private. Embracing the growth mindset that all students and teachers are capable of growth through dedication and effort. Describe your professional talents as a work in progress. What are your plans and strategies for challenging your growth mindset and how would this be useful and constructive in your role as superintendent of Wareham Public Schools?
Great, thank you. Well, I'm someone who's been a lifelong learner. I know that sounds like a familiar cliche. While being busy working as a working mom, raising a family, I decided at age 40 that I needed to learn a lot more about reading and reading instruction, literacy. And I started taking courses at UMass Lowell and then I was very fortunate to have professors there who said, "Why aren't you wrapping this into a doctorate? Why aren't you going for a doctorate in curriculum and instruction?" I pushed back a little bit on that thinking, "How can I possibly do that? Do a dissertation, a study, get a variety of different sites?" But I was able to do that. It took a long while, but achieved my doctorate in my 50s. Sometimes, the growth mindset, and I think that that's a really wonderful thing that you're bringing up, Carol Dweck's wonderful work at Stanford University. I'm someone who looks at the research, I'm constantly reading into the wee hours of the night and constantly doing my homework about what are the best policies, programs, and opportunities for kids. I'm constantly looking in the mirror in terms of, have I made the best decision for kids? Have I made the best decision for teachers? Constantly interested in teaching and learning and I'm willing to say, if I've made a mistake, to say, "I'm sorry." I think that life and education is constantly about saying, "I'm sorry, let's revisit that and let's reflect." So lifelong learner, willing to look in the mirror, constantly reflect, willing to do the hard study and the homework throughout my life.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. And Chris Fontz?
Hello.
Hello.
My general question is, how would you organize this district curriculum-wise so that you can guarantee student academic improvement?
I'm a big believer in systems thinking. So if we want kids to be able to read and write well, and reading and writing are those cross-cutting skills that extend across mathematics, science, social studies, art, music, physical education, you have to be able to read and you have to be able to write and think and explain your thoughts. You have to start very, very young and that's at the pre-K level. So, very, very important to think about forming a team with all of the different principles. Nobody with the opportunity to be siloed, working exclusively within their own building. They have to be able to link arms among all their principals, the brethren across all of the different schools. We would need to develop a uniform concept of what does excellent teaching and learning look like? What does it look like in the classroom? What does it look like to model among our principles? One way to achieve that is through instructional rounds that extends for the high school principal, going to see the pre-K, K, 1, that whole continuum of instruction. We also need a very clear articulated curriculum. I'm happy at ORR that we're handing out our curriculum on CDs this week. It's an articulated, common core curriculum in English Language Arts, Social Studies, Mathematics, and Science, the core curriculum areas. But we've been able to link arms with Social Studies and all other areas to have that clear curriculum. Clarity of what students need to know and be able to do across every grade level, principals knowing that they're not just siloed within their building, that that continuum, we own all children, all children are all of ours, we're working for the good of all. Systems thinking. The other thing that's really important for a superintendent to do is not to reward the superstars. So if we think about the sports field, some of us may have been rewarded for running across a field in lacrosse or in tennis, but actually, if you think about education, you really need to reward the team players. And so the teachers who are rewarded the most are those who can link arms with each other, share great craft of teaching practices, principals who link arms with each other and realize that the elementary children are soon going to end up on the threshold of the junior high or middle school principal. How do we establish that continuum of instruction that's rigorous and excellent all along the way? It's through observing, teaching, and learning, making sure everybody knows their role, nobody's running across the field alone, and that we're supporting each other. So it's a team sport, there's no I. I would be the chief coach of the entire system, making sure there are no solo players.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I apologize for the length, but it's an important subject-
Sure.
-to me and it's a four-part question, so I'll be glad to repeat it as you see fit.
Okay, all right.
Teachers, professors, at all levels, spend their lives differentiating between the performances of students, mostly using tests, but are generally uncomfortable with the idea of using test data as the basis for judging their own performances. Given that there is no reason to assume that this incongruous inconsistency is a problem unique to professionals, please explain to the committee and the citizens of Wareham why the evaluation of public school teachers has been so poorly done in the past, why you believe there are unique circumstances that make improvement of the evaluation process so difficult, and how you would make sure it was done well in Wareham Public Schools?
Thank you. Okay. So, in thinking about the past, many of our evaluation tools have lacked the clarity that I just spoke about. We may not have known what students needed to know and be able to do in a particular subject area. We also had some tools that were inadequate, checkoff boxes, long narratives. And also, in education, since it is a team sport, we're also very, very nice people. We're uncomfortable with conflict, but sometimes, conflict has to be part of the landscape. The bottom line is the teaching and the learning. Are students having great outcomes? Are they ending up at great colleges where you are, for example? So we need great outcomes for every student. So we haven't had the best tools. Right now, in our 21st century, we have a terrific supervision and evaluation system, a four-pronged system, which highlights teaching and learning. What is your skill to deliver instruction and test it, measure it, look in the window, and then readjust one's instruction? So we have a different paradigm. We also have, fortunately for some of us, iPads, computers, tools and templates we can take with us. And in a flash, instead of filling out lengthy forms, we can, at the flick of a few fingertips, return data to teachers in a timely manner so that no one goes to the parking lot in the evening wondering how they did in a class that day. So inept tools, lack of clarity, was the paradigm of the past. Now we have clarity, we know what is important in teaching and learning, and we have great data tools, not just the MCAS examination, we have other markers and touchstones to think about. What are our outcomes for our kids? How many kids are going to great certificate programs? How many kids are college and career ready? We have ways to measure, are they accessing four-year public or private colleges and staying there and graduating within four years? We need to measure all of that. Beyond MCAS, we have many other tools. In the district where I'm working now, we test kids using a software tool called Galileo. We test them as soon as they come in, in September, two other benchmark assessments and end-of-the-year assessment, so that we're getting constant dipsticks, just as you would in your gas tank, to find out, what do students know and what are they able to do and how do we readjust instruction all along the way? So, in the past, it has been difficult, there's no excuse now, to have an inept teacher evaluation system. Our teachers are being trained now, or have been over the past year, in what are the priorities for the system? It's the same system for superintendents, for assistant superintendents, and for principals. So we'll have uniformity of values, we'll have the skills and the tools to make sure that we have lots of artifacts to attest to a teacher moving the needle on student achievement or remaining static. So no more excuses, it's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Good evening, Dr. Franco's.
Good evening, Mr. Flaherty.
All right. Mine's a little verbose too, just if I need to repeat it, just let me know.
I was an English major. I like verbose.
Yeah. A recent district review of Wareham Public Schools by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education concluded, among other things, that learning isn't as rigorous as it should be in our district. In fact, the matter of rigor was referenced 11 times in the 58-page report that we received this past March. With this in mind, currently Wareham students who participate in school sports at the high school are allowed to fail one of their courses and yet still continue playing school sports. Many parents find this policy unacceptable. They point to the fact that other Wareham students who happen to attend the regional vocational school are not allowed to fail any courses at all if they wish to play sports. Do you think it is an unreasonable expectation to have students of Wareham Public Schools pass all of their classes if they wish to participate in school sports?
Well, it would be nice if we had a neat and tidy policy that was consistent among both schools. However, in a human endeavor, I think that every student needs to be looked at as in a case-by-case example. For example, if a student has committed some terrible wrongdoing, he certainly should not be playing sports, nor should she. However, if a student is moving forward along a continuum of instruction and we are sure that while we want rigor in instruction, while we have the proper tools, textbooks, materials, and supplies to engage that student, do we also have the interventions in place to make sure that that student is showing a good faith effort to become not only a great student, but also the good sportsman? Kids come to school for a variety of different reasons. They come sometimes for sports, they come for the art or the music, they come for the academics. Our chief mission is the academics and the academic rigor. However, very important to look at each student and say, "What kind of good faith effort are you showing through contract, through talk and discussion so that you can play the sports?" We have our standards for, from the MIA, as long as we have a developmentally appropriate policy for grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, the student is aware of the policy. It's not written in a binder somewhere, but as long as that policy has been communicated to the student. And we've had a talk and a caring discussion about, do you realize, do you know that your behaviors, your lack of attention to academics, your lack of following through, do you know those consequences? Very important that we've appraised the student of those consequences. If we have not, as adults, we're remiss. Now, so the ultimate answer to this is, look at the student, what kind of good faith effort is she or he demonstrating to move forward? Do we have a contract? But whatever this policy needs to be, it needs to be uniform among the two schools. So, hard and fast policies, not necessarily helpful in a human endeavor because kids come to school for the football, the tennis, the lacrosse, the soccer. You can absolutely be promoting a dropout rate if you have a hard and fast policy and you haven't really looked at students on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of distrust from the citizens of Wareham, including parents, with how the schools are spending money. What have you done in your last position to increase this level or a level of confidence in the budget and fight for additional resources?
Well, I'm engaged in producing four different budgets. One of the things that we do is start the budget process early in the fall by bringing in all different stakeholders. We work with each one of our principals, we work with all of our curriculum heads, technology, curriculum instruction, town selectmen, facilities, and then it's very, very important to be very transparent with each of those budgets so that the budgets cohere with the strategic plan and the mission, which is teaching and learning for all of our schools. The budgets are shared with people on the FINCOM, town selectmen, in a repeated iterative process so that by the time they go to the town floor for the vote, they have been seen by a number of different people, representatives mostly from the FINCOM and from the selectmen. So there are absolutely no surprises. In terms of fighting for more money, not really a fight, it is more of a discussion and a negotiation. It's been my experience that if there's clarity on the particular program and the need for it, the justification for new texts, materials, supplies, technology, academic programming, athletic programming, it's been my experience that people have understood and it's been, not been a fractious process. We do look continuously where I am or where I was in Arlington, looking for foundations, the creation of a 21st Century Fund, the constant search for particular donors to make donations for programming, corporate sponsorships, grants. Over at ORR, I've found a grant from University of Nebraska, University of Texas. So these partnerships have been very, very fruitful. So if we can't find the way to support programs through the tax dollars, we look for other ways to make things happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So next question, Kenny?
It is?
Well.
Round one.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna, instead of going through there, I'm just gonna go.
You sort of, you sort of touched on this, but you stated before that this is the job you've been waiting for and you're very active in the community. Please tell us how you can use those ties to bring in more revenue to our district.
Well, a couple of years ago, at one of the establishments here at Wareham Crossing, I noticed that Paula Abdul made her appearance. And at the risk of invoking a Hollywood contact, one of the things that's very clear to me is there are some folks who give wonderful money to the Wareham Schools, Makepeace, for example, but there are incredible businesses that, as of yet, appear to be untapped. Corporate sponsors, TJ Maxx, Olympia Sports, Abbey Glass, I could go on. But in, one of the things that I would seek to do pretty immediately upon becoming superintendent would be to tap into corporate sponsors and to be looking for alternative forms of financing programming. One of the things I would look for is to find a corporate sponsor to adopt particular programming, a literacy support, a mathematics support, a social studies and civics program support, and a support for buildings and grounds. So I would be one of the first people with my handout. I'm involved in a number of different groups, a member of the Y, my house of worship, and League of Women Voters, and so my outreach into the community is extensive. I live three miles from here, so- I live three miles from here, so I have absolutely no shyness about putting my hand out, asking for the kinds of support that we would need to make sure the programming is excellent. To make sure our teachers can be evaluated, just to go back to a previous question, if we're going to evaluate teachers with the kind of rigor that we need to do, we need to make sure they have all the tools to produce excellent teaching and learning. And those tools are technologic as well as material. Once those are all in place, the sky's the limit. The sky's the limit for the Wareham Public Schools. It will be Wareham wonderful.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Given that you have never had a principal or superintendent position during your career, your ability to effectively lead all of the various people necessary to achieve the overall goals of an educational institution has never been truly tested. Do you acknowledge the different skills necessary to be a successful head of a school or district, as opposed to a senior member of a central office? And how can the committee be sure that you have them?
Okay. Good, good, pithy question. Well, I work closely with principals, and I always have worked closely with principals. If you reflect on the site visit that you had recently at ORR, I would hope that the principals would attest to that. I work closely with principals in the Triton Schools, Hamilton Wenham Schools. I've been on a school council at the Masconomet Regional, working with principals. If you're interested in someone to manage and run a building, probably I'm not the person for you. The central mission of your school district is teaching and learning. And I would work in concert with your principals and continue to have that trusted relationship, understanding them, understanding the complexity of their position. And they, too, I make the complexity of mine very, very clear. When things are challenging within the current school district where I work, I will be a substitute building principal, and I have enormous admiration for the work of principals and assistant principals. But you need a superintendent who can look at the entire district across all schools and make sure that that continuum is very clear, understand that we're all rowing in the same direction, and understand that we're all working as a team. I'm that person who can foster that teamwork. So, I think that there are some folks who have that capacity to look broadly, and others enjoy building management and building leadership, and that's a great and honorable profession. I've worked very closely with my superintendent. He's a great mentor. And I hope that through the site visit and through my answers this evening, you'll have the assurance that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a curiosity question.
Okay.
In your application, you made a statement that you consider one of the greatest challenges and obstacles in Wareham to closing the student achievement gap, and this is a quote, "to be the gap between what is taught and what is assessed." I'd like to know what information or data you considered in order to make that statement? And if curriculum alignment is the problem, why, in your opinion, have all our alignment efforts not produced better test scores?
Well, we're in kind of a fishy zone right now. We're in a transition zone. And so Wareham is not the only district, if you look at data across the state, that is having this gap between that which is assessed and that which is taught. We're transitioning teachers across the state to this new Common Core State Standards. If you look at, if you've Googled me, you've seen NPR, I was the person who made the argument for the Common Core State Standards before the Massachusetts Board of Education, and I was one of the writers. Common Core State Standards privileges nonfiction reading as opposed to literary text. It privileges argument as opposed to persuasion based on emotion. Very, very different teaching and learning is happening, or needs to happen, right now. So this is not necessarily something that is of fault. What we need to do is help teachers adopt the new lens, the new teaching tools, the new pedagogies, that will close that teaching and learning gap. There's an enormous push for statistics and probability, the mathematics that anyone who's heading into humanities can navigate. So, big shifts are afoot to help kids get ready for college and career readiness. As someone who studied the Common Core State Standards and was a writer, I can help with that. It will take waves of professional development. In the past, many students across our state learned about science by reading a textbook and answering the questions in the past. Right now, it's about claim, evidence, and reasoning. You have to do science. That's a big shift. Got to get your hands dirty. You've got to work with specimens. So that's why I'm making that argument. We need the materials and supplies to make that happen. Exciting, engaging, and inquiry-based learning is what the Common Core is all about, so that we can feed the biotech industry, we can feed all those jobs that are going begging in Massachusetts with kids from Wareham who are completely ready and able to go. So, the gap is knowing the assessments and knowing how to close that by being sure our teachers are equipped with those correct pedagogies to close that gap. We're in that transition phase. I've been doing a lot of work on that down the road. I can help with that here. The other thing is, you need someone to really understand those assessments. I've been a test writer for the Massachusetts Department of Education. I've written test questions for a number of the different assessments and done the psychometrics. Also looked at the bias, the cultural nature of the questions, and whether or not they were flawed. I've studied the PARC assessments. I've studied the AP exams. I've taken them myself. I've studied the SAT exams. I can get your SAT scores and your profile at your high school up pretty quickly. There's some low-hanging fruit. So, I'm a test guru, and I can help people adjust to the assessments that are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
All right. In your application, one of your stated goals is to move the Wareham School District out of its Level III status within one year. What is it that you believe would make you a more, what is it that you would, sorry, what is it that you would believe, came up wrong. What is it that you believe would make you more successful in this endeavor than others before you who have tried?
Okay. Well, first, let's talk about Level III and what it does. It's demoralizing. There's some shaming and some blaming around what Level III status is. And it brings the Massachusetts Department of Education into our shores with a level of oversight that's not necessarily very comfortable. What they do is they tell you how to spend your grant monies, so you have less discretion over how those monies are spent. It's very important to get off of the Level III status as quickly as possible. One of the things that I referenced before is teachers need the pedagogical techniques, the strategies, and skills to engage kids with high-level learning, not just right-answer learning, but very, very complicated kinds of engaging activities. I know what I'm looking at when I'm in the classroom. You'd be getting a superintendent who would be out and about, not only dealing with the finance and the budget, working with the team of the principals, working with the team of the teachers, but I would know teachers on a granular basis and where their skills and their talents are, and be able to have critical conversations with them about where they need to go. Goal setting is very, very important. Making sure that your principals understand what excellence in teaching and learning look like. And able to analyze very quickly. I'm a quick study. If you look at my last job prior to ORR, I worked with 46 different high schools, creating a pre-AP to AP program. That meant building backwards, starting with fifth grade. What are the critical thinking skills in mathematics, science, and English language arts that have to happen in grade five to make sure that when kids can take an AP course in junior year at high school, or senior year in high school, they're ready to go? They're not going to be set up for failure. They're in there, they're going to feel like intellectuals, and they're going to be intellectuals. So very important to have that lens on learning, knowing where the holes and gaps are, knowing what the assessments are that our kids are going to face, and then knowing how to get the materials, resources, and supplies, to make sure they have everything that they need to do. In one year of being over at ORR, one of our schools went to a commendation school for the literacy work, that would be Matt Apoysit. So that's beyond Level I. That's a school that the state notices because the work in reading comprehension, literacy, and writing has surpassed state expectations. At Rochester Memorial, our elementary school on Level II is now Level I. That took that kind of lens on learning. It took my linking arms with the principal to be able to transform that. So, it's teamwork and it's understanding learning. It's building backwards to make sure that small children can read and read very, very skillfully, very well. Right now, with the Common Core State Standards, they have to read by second grade, not third grade, as it used to be under No Child Left Behind. It's a lot more work. So we have some work ahead to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question from the community.
Okay.
Your district, the district that you're in today, has much more money and much less diversity than Wareham. What in your career has prepared you for those differences?
Okay. Most of all, having started my career in Jamaica Plain High School during the busing period, way back in the 70s, I went from there to Brookline High School, where 32 different languages were being spoken. The Brookline Public Schools, where I spent my first 10 years teaching, is a school system with a very, very active Metco program. African-American children coming out from Boston, where there was substantial achievement gap, and it was not something that was acceptable in the Brookline Public Schools. I worked very, very hard, as did all of my colleagues, to make sure that our children from Boston and our children living in Brookline, and our new immigrants in Brookline, were accessing the same education, having the same materials, the same experiences, the same field trips, working very, very hard to achieve that. In Arlington, a similar situation, except not only did we have a Metco program that enriched the education of our students and everybody involved, Arlington is a community where many children who are refugees from the Sudan were able to learn. I was privileged to teach there and be a department chair, a director, pre-K through 12, where I was able to hire all reading, English language arts, elementary teachers, and evaluate them at that time. A substantial budget. One of the things that caught the attention of the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative in the next juncture of my career is that in my advanced placement class, I was a teaching administrator in Arlington, my boss, whose reference you have, he noticed that many of the students in my advanced placement class, two years earlier, had been in the Sudan, living in Red Cross refugee camps. One of the things I do is I help transform lives, when I was a teacher, when I was a department chair, and now. So, diversity has meant a lot to me, going out, finding the funds, making sure students who have challenges economically have the best access to our state university system, and I advocate energetically for them. So, I moved then to the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, worked with Chelsea High School, the Boston Public Schools. And occasionally, on the weekends, I go teach at Brighton High School, at the School of Math and Science in Roxbury. I'm continuously honing my teaching skills, about once a month, by teaching in Boston. I've taught at Exel High School in South Boston, Worcester Public Schools, and Springfield Public Schools. So I consider myself a teacher of teachers, and I'll be your chief academic officer, as well as your chief financial officer. I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there follow-up questions that the committee have, from one of their questions that either needs to be answered, or one of the questions that you have any follow-up to? Yes?
I don't have it in front of me, but I could be wrong, but I think you indicated that the principal of the school should be the instructional leader of that school. Is that a fair statement?
I think that is a fair statement.
But in one of your answers to, I think, Dr. Sylvia's question, you seem to indicate you plan to have a fairly intimate relationship with individual teachers and assisting them. That sounds like you'd be pushing the principal aside in his role as instructional leader.
I don't think necessarily pushing the principal aside. I think that if you're in it together as colleagues, linking arms, having the opportunity to be out and about in the classrooms, you're really, you're having a grounded understanding of the quality of the instruction. So, a superintendent should not be a drive-by. A superintendent needs to be someone who not only collaborates with the principal, but is also out there seeing the quality of the teaching and the learning, especially with implementation of the program. If we're implementing a particular literacy program, or social studies program, or mathematics program, fidelity of that is going to be critical. For example, you have everyday math. Huge piece of everyday math program is working with manipulatives. Very important for a superintendent to take those instructional rounds with the principal or without the principal, to see that all the components of an everyday math program are actually there. Without the fidelity, we're not going to be able to close that achievement gap. So it's a check-in. Again, those dipsticks are really important. Not pushing aside, working with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to make a final statement, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, again, thank you so much for inviting me to be here. This is the superintendency I've been waiting for. This is the position that I've dreamed of. I'm someone who is very much tied to the community and very invested in my aspirations to see Wareham become the school system that you're dreaming of and the grandparents, the parents, and all the students are thinking of as well. My goal is to make sure that the outcomes for Wareham children are the best that they possibly can be. So I work very energetically to bring in the money, restore the faith in the public school system, in the school committee's desire for excellent programming, and to communicate that with the financial heads within the town. It's been a great evening, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, just before you go, I just want to tell you, again, thank you for being here. I wanted to let each one of the candidates know the process. The school committee will reconvene in executive session next Tuesday. We're going to discuss the next step after that, but we will come out, deliberate, and open session, and then make the decision early next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short recess, and we will start the next interview at 7:25. Great. Welcome back, everyone. We are now on to our next interview, for the final candidate for the Wareham superintendent position. I want to welcome Dr. Anthony Pope, who is an educational consultant and also former superintendent in the Marlboro School System. So thank you for being here, Dr. Pope.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do is start off with an opening statement. Then there'll be questions from the committee. We'll do any follow-up if we have time, and then a closing statement. So if you could, if you could just begin with an opening statement.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Wareham School Committee for this opportunity to be one of three finalists, with an opportunity to be the leader, the next leader here in Marlboro, I'm still in Marlboro, next leader here in Wareham Public Schools. A little bit about me, I know the public is watching. I'm a father of three, three boys. Family is the most important thing to me. I feel I can be an excellent candidate and an excellent leader for Wareham Public Schools. I've been a teacher, assistant principal, a principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent. And I think my experience and my leadership throughout my career has prepared me for this most important position. So I look forward to the opportunity to be the next leader here in Wareham Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question will come from Mike Flaherty. Mike?
Good evening, Dr. Pope.
How you doing?
Good to see you again. I'll get right to it. In your last interview with us, you asserted that our status as a Level III district would be the top priority for you. You claimed that you could bring Wareham out of Level III status within one year. What is it that you believe would make you more successful in this endeavor than the others before you who have tried?
Thank you for the question. Being a Level III district is, points straight to student achievement. I think as superintendent, and if I can just clarify, my goal will be to move Wareham Public Schools out of Level III. It's a very daunting task to do in one year. The exam- one year. The example that I have given before, when I took the position as principal in Waymouth High School, they had not met AYP in four years. We did some things like targeting, specifically the population that was not making the achievements that were needed. By making some adjustments and really targeting students based on data, at the end of that year, and when we got the results, our students had made AYP for the first time in four years. So I think as superintendent, one thing that's going to be important before you can make that bold statement, you have to include teachers. It has to be a collaboration. We have to know what the conditions are currently in classrooms, what teachers need to push students to that level, because I can't do it from my seat. The rubber really hits the road with principals and teachers. So I think tapping into those expertise at the school level, but also the most important thing is really looking at the data and identifying who are the students that really need the help in closing the gap, and that's going to be the first thing that we will try to do. That will be a very big goal, and since I've had success before, I'm not saying we'll do it, but we're definitely going to try.
Great. Dr. Sylvia?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
People who are involved in education profession experience some successes, some failures, some more public than private. Embracing the growth mindset that all students and teachers are capable of growth through dedication and effort. Describe your professional talents as a work in progress. What are your plans and strategies for challenging your growth mindset, and how would this be useful and constructive in your role as superintendent of Wareham Public Schools?
Thank you for the question. As superintendent, not just as superintendent, but as an educator, I consider myself a continuous learner, and I believe once you think you have it all figured out, I think you're done. I think I can lead by example. As far as my professional talents, I think that's one of my talents, realizing that I don't have it all figured out. It takes me tapping into expertise or more experience. I try to surround myself with mentors that have done this before me. So I think it's going to be important to always have that humbleness about myself as a leader, to recognize that there's always things for me to learn, and I think reflective practice will be important. I consider myself a leader that gets things done. I feel that I'm the type of leader that collaborates and tries to empower others to lead. I think the way you move student achievement is tapping into the expertise that lies in the schools and bringing people together to collaborate around a common goal. I think as far as the human relation skills, being able to listen, that would be the first thing that I would do as superintendent, to make sure I am a very good listener, to understand the context. So as a leader, I think I try to make sure that I use data on a continuous basis, but it's not just a cliche way of saying it. I think we also have to continuously get professional development with all the different models that are changing when it comes to looking at student achievement. So I think that I know how to create a sense of urgency, but when you talk about growth, one thing that I always go back to with myself, and how do I continuously grow, is sometimes I wonder if I go too fast. Sometimes I think you have to slow down sometimes to go fast, but I think that creates that sense of urgency. I've been fortunate, or I think I've been fortunate throughout my career, to be faced with challenges and always, I won't say always, but many of the jobs that I have had, I have been faced with a reform agenda, and everybody's normally not happy during that time. There's some things that I've learned about myself as you try to push what's right for children, and some of those things are, are you going too fast? Are you communicating and bringing people along at an appropriate pace? And I think as leaders, we have to reflect on those things, and I think I have grown as a leader throughout my career, and I have a lot of different experiences that you have seen from my resume. So I think by example, by listening, by participating, if I'm going to ask a teacher or an administrator to do it, I, as a superintendent, should also be willing to do it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Hi.
How you doing?
Teachers, professors, at all levels, spend their lives differentiating between the performance of students, mostly using tests, but are generally uncomfortable with the idea of using test data as the basis for judging their own performance. This incongruous inconsistency troubles me. Please explain to the committee and the citizens of Wareham why the evaluation of public school teachers has been so poorly done in the past, what you believe are the unique circumstances that make improvement of the evaluation process so difficult, and how you would make sure it is done well in Wareham Public Schools?
Thank you for the question, and that's the hot topic, not just here in Massachusetts, it's across the nation. How do we evaluate teachers? One thing that I go straight to when you think about evaluation that's been done poorly, not just now, but for years, it's always working from the model of you're doing something wrong. And what is the culture of teaching? How are teachers feeling comfortable to ask for help? How are teachers feeling comfortable to say, "I don't have what I need"? The culture that has been created around teaching and getting better, I would go out on a limb and say, teachers that are in the classroom want to be the best teachers that they can. They want to provide what students need, but the culture, I think, in developing that positive culture of growth, I think, has been suffering for years. I remember when I was a teacher, I saw no difference then than what I see now. So I think that's been done poorly. I think the way that the collaboration between who's doing the evaluating and who's receiving it, I think there's a disconnect at times. Sometimes you have people that are getting evaluated by people that don't have a clue what's happening in the classroom. I think we need to do a better job of making sure that our evaluators are properly trained when they go into a classroom. So I think it's both sides of the defense. How do teachers get a comfort level that they can go to their evaluator, and it goes right back to culture? So those are a couple things that I think, when we talk about done poorly. As far as improvement, you know, and how do we get, and I'll kind of combine the last two points, what can you do to move forward to make sure that an appropriate model of teacher evaluation is being done appropriately? I think you have to really start with the culture. You know, you can create a document, I'll kind of back up a little bit. You talk about what's wrong with the current process. It's almost like they went from A to Z. Now, the piece that really scares, I think, everyone is the whole student achievement piece that is connected to evaluation. But fortunately, there's other components, because it's not all about student achievement. There's growth that happens in the classroom where a teacher is doing a lot of different things. I think it's a shame that when you look at the whole entire picture around teacher evaluation, a lot of it gets back to focusing on, it turns into a blame game. I think the whole culture around, you know, people saying, "Our teacher's doing their job." Absolutely, they're doing their job. Teachers change lives, and I think we need to change the culture in supporting them and making sure that they have the resources that they need. One thing that I would do as superintendent, to ensure that there's a strong evaluation system. We know that what's being mandated by the state as far as evaluation, but we need to also make sure that they are part of the conversation, not just part of it, but are engaged in the conversation to what that evaluation looks like. I think it's going to be important for me as superintendent to make sure I forge a very positive relationship with the union president and make sure that we are all on the same page. And we're going to have to get together and make sure that we start creating the culture, and it doesn't happen overnight, where a teacher can feel good about getting feedback and also feel good about asking for that feedback. One example that I'll give, when I was executive director for high schools in Providence Public Schools, we operated around a model of walkthroughs from Lauren Resnick model out of the University of Pittsburgh called Learning Walks. And it was a model where we had a pre and a post conference with teachers before we went into their room, but the conversation was more like, "How can we help you? What do you want us to look for?" So we did a walkthrough, but we also had time with that teacher to talk about things that he or she may want to try to do differently. So it took some time. It didn't happen in a year, but I can honestly say, in my tenure there, you saw more of a collaboration, and I think that's what teacher evaluation needs to be more about. How can you create a model of improvement? It's a very important topic. I'm going to stop, I can talk a lot on that particular topic, but I think we need to change the culture of how people feel comfortable about getting better, because I think that everybody wants to get better, and the way we do that, start talking to one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Welcome back. Your resume shows a path of constant moving one job to another. If you could talk about that, and what assurances will you give the town of Wareham that this is a district where you might want to end your career?
Thank you for the question. I feel like I've been very, very fortunate throughout my career, being given so many different opportunities, and when I say opportunities, I've always felt like ever since I stopped being a teacher, I've always been put on the fast track. I feel like all of those experiences that you see on my resume were one goal in mind, to get to the level of being a superintendent. I feel like I'm at a point in my career where I can take all of those experiences and really put my roots down and to really practice. My goal has been always to be a superintendent. I went through the Urban Superintendent Program at Harvard University, and my goal was to get this seat. So what you see on my resume were opportunities for me to gain that experience that I need to sit in that seat of superintendent. And going from one job to job was not about, I will say this, I was always in good standing in the jobs that I left. To give you an example, some of the jobs I didn't even apply for. Those were the type of opportunities that I felt very fortunate to have. When I was principal of Waymouth High School, I didn't apply for the principal job. The superintendent at the time asked me, could, she said, "Can you give me two years?" I went in for two years, asked me to do the hard work of resetting the mission and trying to bring a new flavor to that particular high school, and we did that. So in Texas, one year, and I'll just say that very quickly, my wife didn't like Texas, you know, and I've made that joke before, you know, mom's not happy, nobody's happy. We tried to move to Texas. I was there for one year as executive director for high schools in a district of about sixty-eight thousand students, and my family is the most important thing to me. And once I knew my wife wasn't happy, and when my youngest, my oldest kept telling me, "Daddy, we're going back to our home in Massachusetts." So some of my movement was about family, some was about opportunity. One job that you see when I was at the nonprofit for the big picture company, I'm just going to give a couple of examples. It was a decent job, but they told me I was going to travel maybe five days out of a month. It turned into fifteen days out of a month, and we just had our first child. So I had a commitment to my family, and I couldn't keep doing the traveling. So those are just some examples, but I think the most important thing, I was very lucky to have those different experiences to prepare me for this seat. I see myself reacting where I want to be in ten years. If I am afforded the opportunity to be superintendent in Wareham, I hope I'm here, because I don't think you can make the type of improvement in three years. My long-term commitment, my family, we're here, our house is here, and we're not moving back to Texas. So I say, I've been very lucky throughout my career. You know, the paradigm is shifting also. When we think about students today, and there's been some studies about how students think about the workforce, you know, and staying in a job for long periods of time or getting experience in multiple jobs, you know, I'm much older than that now, but I think I can take those experiences that I've had throughout my career and apply them to be a good superintendent.
Thank you.
And Wareham, there is distrust from citizens and also some parents about how the school system is spending money. What have you done in your last position to increase the level of confidence in the budget and fight for, or to work in the community for more resources?
Thank you for the question. In my last position, these are some of the things that I did. I walked into, I'll give you a little bit of the context. I walked into a district that was already 1.6 million dollars that we had to return to the city. It was something that happened that I was, before my tenure. I inherited a budget, and we had lost, not lost, but it was discovered that there was a million-dollar mistake in the Special Education Department. So right away, we were confronted with some issues, and getting trust right away wasn't the easiest thing to do. One thing that I made a very conscious effort to do, coming in as superintendent, is to develop a very solid entry plan where I made sure I was listening to everyone around. I scheduled individual meetings with city council to try to get to understand and know what their thoughts around schools were. I did things like parent and community forums. In those parent and community forums, they weren't just always focused on curriculum instruction, even though that was the majority, but when budget time came, we gave parents an opportunity to voice what their concerns were, what they thought was important. And I also thought, going through the process of entry, of listening to parents, asking one question, "What do you want from your schools?", I think that was important, because people felt listened to. I created something called Workout Wednesdays, where every Wednesday, I told the community to meet me at the track, where we walked and talked, we worked out for thirty minutes, and we just talked. It was another venue to allow parents and community to talk about what's working well, what's not working well. So I think some of those things, of making sure that I am very, very visible as superintendent, but some other things, process-wise, I think are going to be important. What are some of the programs that we currently have that are operating, and how often is there program evaluation? Do we have a strategic plan where we are aligning our dollars to what we say that we need to do for kids? With program evaluation, we can see if we're really getting a bang for our buck. So I think in order to get confidence, I think you have to be out there talking to folks. I think you have to be very visible as superintendent, and you have to include people in the process. We also put out a survey to parents and asked very pointed questions about the budget and where do you think we need to spend dollars? You know, it was open-ended, and we did get some pretty good responses to hear what the public was thinking as far as dollars in that aspect. I think we also need to be very aggressive when it comes to external dollars. As you see from my resume, I have experience in that area. We brought STEM dollars to Marlboro. When I was in Boston Public Schools, I was part of a team during a small school era where when we put in our plan, it was a thirteen-million-dollar grant from the Gates Foundation. So I think we have to be very, very aggressive. If we already know that funding is low, what can we do to look at some of the innovative things that are happening across the country and think about innovative programs that are very attractive for Wareham?
Thank you. Jeff?
Despite your outstanding education and mentors, your career has been marked by an inability to remain in leadership position for significant periods of time. During your initial interview, I inferred, you may not have intended to imply, that you have a philosophy of, to shorten a well-known phrase, "Follow or get out of the way." Even if this is true because of your passion to achieve on behalf of students, do you believe that this apparent lack of humility contributed to short tenure in positions and a polarizing of some communities with respect to support for yourself?
Thank you for the question.
You're sure?
Oh, yeah. Actually, this was not a hard one to answer, because it wasn't an inability to remain in other positions. It was me trying to get to this seat of superintendency.
I'm sorry. It was you trying to what?
It was me having opportunities to gain experience to be a superintendent, and also, it was also me leaving different positions to account for what my family needed at the time. So when I say, when I hear inability to remain, I left all of my past jobs in pretty good standing. My last job was a little different. Politics sort of played a major role. My last job was a little different, politics sort of played a major role there, in Marlboro Public Schools, my first superintendency. But when I look at my past positions, I've gotten recognition from all, all of my former bosses. So, I think my career path was not about an inability, and I, I don't perceive myself from operating as a leader that says, I lead, you follow. I think you get nothing done when that happens. I think as a leader, you have to collaborate. The rubber hits the road when you bring people together. I have demonstrated that in my, in my last position as well. We had over a hundred and forty teachers that were involved in developing curriculum frameworks, as well as developing the curriculum. And one, my message to them was, I can't do it, I need you to be part of the solution. And that's the type of leader I feel I am. When I was in Waymouth High School, we developed what we call Career Academies. We had over half the staff that were participating in design teams, and it was teacher-led. The design teams that, the Career Academies that you see at Waymouth High School today were all driven and designed by teachers. And it was more of a collaboration, it was tapping into teacher leadership and administrative leadership. That's the way I will lead, and that's the way I think you get things done. Because here's the thing with education, when, when there's a change agenda, this is where, I won't say it gets tricky, but when you are charged with push, with pushing a reform agenda, everybody's not happy. And you're gonna have some people that are gonna follow and go with the direction, because they're part of the process. But then you're gonna have some, no matter if they're part of the process, no matter what, I'm gonna stay right here. And that, that creates conflict. And I think as a leader, I've been in many situations where I've been charged with the reform agenda. But I think I'm always gonna go back to, we ha- it has to be we, it has to be us. We have to include teachers in the conversation, we have to include administrators in the conversation, it has to be a product that we all develop. I mean, school committee, teachers, parents. When I started in Marlboro, right now Marlboro is still operating from what we call Believe 2016, five-year strategic plan, the district, the districts first. They never had a real direction and a real strategic plan. In that strategic plan, it just didn't come out of thin air, and I just didn't write it in a room. It started with the entry process, where I went out to teachers with focus groups, I talked to principals, I talked to teachers, and I, back to the question, what do you want from schools? What are some of the issues? What are some of the problems? I talked to students, same thing. And, and what you get from that, you get some pretty good data. And from that data, we developed goals for the district. The district also did not have defined goals for their direction, which made the budgeting process hard. But what we did, we defined goals, the school committee approved the goals. And from those goals, we developed a strategic plan based on the input from teachers, staff, administrators, based on gathering all that data. I think as a leader, you have to be a great listener. And, and when you listen, I think you have to take the time to make sure people feel they're being listened to. So, my past positions, and I'll go back to say, I, I was very fortunate. And if I wanted to be in Texas still, I could be in Texas. You know, if I wanted to be in Stanford, Connecticut, even though the superintendent's in Baltimore now, you know, it was, it was a great learning experience for me. When I was in Providence, Rhode Island, I went through four leaders in one year. The superintendent had hired me, a transitional superintendent, an acting superintendent, and then they finally hired someone. By then, I was a finalist for an assistant soup job in Stanford, Connecticut. So, my career has been marked by gaining as much experience as I can. And now, knocking on fifty's door, I'm at a place in my life where we're not moving our children again. I'm here to look for a long-term commitment, where I can try to make a difference as a leader.
Thank you.
Ken?
I have two. Thanks, Dr. Sylvia. How would you organize this district curriculum-wise, so that you can guarantee student academic improvement?
As, as far as organization around curriculum, and I'm gonna go back to this, and then I'll give you some ideas. I think coming in, I, I could say it from here, from my seat, but it's not just my decision. I think, I go back to collaboration, and we did this when I was in Marlboro. I need to spend some time understanding what's in place, what's working well, and what's not working well. The last thing I wanna do as superintendent, if there are some pockets of things that are really working well in the district, we need to make sure we find out how to maintain those. And it also is an opportunity to find out where those talents are within the district. Each district, I believe, has a different culture or a different context. So, I think I need to spend some time seeing what's on teachers' minds, what's on principals' minds, what's on assistant principals' minds, what they think is working well, what they think some of the issues are. Because I think the rubber hits the road at the school level. I need to spend some time with school committees to see what they think some of the issues are. So, as far as any organization come, I think it has to be a collaborative effort. I think it's something that we have to come together, we have to engage the community, we have to engage parents, because who defines the values of Wareham? Not the superintendent. I think the superintendent has to be collaborative, to make sure that they are engaging everyone in the community, because it's their school. So, I think that's the approach that I would take. But i- in a quick answer around organization, we have to look at the common core, we have to look at core twenty-first century skills, and make sure that everything's aligned to the Mass State standards. So, those three components, from the start, we have to make sure that those things are in place. When I entered Marlboro, they did not have a curriculum. So, the first thing that we did, we started to work at the end of the first year, 'cause we had to do that work of listening, to create a curriculum framework, and teachers did it. At that time, we had, for the framework, over sixty teachers and administrators. And what they did, they put together a document that aligned the Mass, Mass frameworks with core twenty-first century skills and the common core. The next phase of that work went into curriculum development, where we definitely were gonna need more teachers, because we needed representation at each of the different grade levels. And the focus was K through eight, pre-K through eight, from the beginning. So, I think that's the structure. And, and one thing that has to be clear and front and center, rigor, and making sure that expectations are here. It's, it's four things that I always bring with me everywhere I go. You know, high expectations for all, how do we build in accountability to any curriculum that we develop? You know, how are we using data to make sure that we are informing our planning and the instructional core? Everything focuses back to the instructional core. Research tells us over and over again, when you talk about student achievement, where's the difference? In the classroom with instruction. So, the, my approach would be making sure that I'm bringing everyone into the conversation. I can't come in as a leader and make an assumption that I know everything, because every place is different. And a lot of people have been here much longer than I, if I come in as superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm happy you just brought up the matter of rigor, because it segues into my, my next question. A recent district review of Wareham Public Schools by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education concluded, among other things, that learning isn't as rigorous as it should be in our district. In fact, the matter of rigor was referenced eleven times in the fifty-eight-page report we received this past March. With this in mind, currently, Wareham students who participate in school sports at the high school are allowed to fail one of their courses and yet still continue playing school sports. Many parents find this policy unacceptable. They point to the fact that other, other Wareham students who happen to attend the regional vocational school are not allowed to fail any courses at all if they wish to play sports. Do you think it is an unreasonable expectation to have students of Wareham Public Schools pass all of their classes if they wish to participate in school sports?
You know, coming from Texas, that's always a hot topic when you talk about sports. One thing, when I say, as far as rigor, it has to be across the curriculum. And I think you could take extracurricular, and, and if you just put that to the side, we should be creating rigor, curriculum, and expectation for students to be successful lifelong learners, no matter if they're doing extracurricular or not. That would definitely be the first goal. I think when we look at MIAA, they have set standards, they have been around for a long time. And most, all schools throughout Massachusetts at least have to meet that minimum. One thing that I think is gonna be important, is to make sure that we are in line with MIAA first, not going below the standard. Many districts throughout the Commonwealth, they go above that standard, you know, and make sure that they are setting expectations high. As superintendent, I don't make policy. But one thing that my job is, is to consult with the board and advise. I go back to the values piece, what's important in the community of Wareham, what's important to parents, what's important to teachers, what's important to the school committee, as far as the expectations around sports. Here you have a, a, a policy, but then you have the expectation by MIAA. What, what is the will of the community? What do they value, and what is important? And I'll take that same collaborative approach, as far as who are we getting around the table, as far as to having that conversation about, do we need to make our standards tighter? Do we need to make them stronger? And I think I cannot dictate that as superintendent. I think, since I don't make policy, I have to make sure that I am part of the conversation, and making sure that we have the correct people around the table. But as far as standards, I always subscribe to making standards high, and making sure that we put it where everyone can have a chance to get there. I'm, I'm a former coach. One thing I will say about extracurricular, my first two years of teaching, I actually coached in Texas. And I've said this joke before, my first question in an interview was, can you coach? And that's how it is in Texas. But I think it's important that that extracurricular activity, whether it be basketball or chess, can be the deciding factor of a kid going left or right. And, and that's one of the pieces that I think all schools throughout the country can do a better job of. If you fail a class, does that mean, get away from basketball, you can't come over here anymore? When I was a coach, we had study halls all the time. The expectation was to try to do things and put things in place to help kids excel before you get to that point. That's what I think, being more preventive than waiting till that happens. So, I think that it has to be, look at, what are the values of Wareham? What is the will of the committee? What is the will of teachers and parents? As we get around the table and try to decide, do we need to strengthen our policy? Definitely not go below MIAA, but definitely say, do we need to raise our standard? So, that would be my approach.
Thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
Well, you answered part of this, I was gonna ask another question, but, ah, what the heck? I'll, I'll ask it anyways, because you probably could expand on it. I've reviewed all of the information on your application, we've talked before, we had a lengthy conversation, about a week ago, I guess. And we got a lot of information about Marlboro. But I'd like to know a little bit more about Waymouth. You were the Waymouth principal. There wasn't a whole lot said about Waymouth, so I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have you relate to your accomplishments as principal of Waymouth, Waymouth High School. And, you know, could you review for the committee, your successes, or lack of success, if it's relevant, when you were principal of Waymouth High School?
Okay, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Waymouth was a position that I was actually a finalist for the assistant soup, and then the superintendent came to me and said, would you be our principal? Can you give me two years? And I knew it was challenging. To give you the context, the, every, all teachers at the school had just spent an entire year on work to rule. It was a, a principal had left, no mission, they were in danger of having their accreditation taken away. They were on probation. So, one of the big accomplishments were, was, and of course, I couldn't do that in two years when you're on probation, but I was fortunate to get an email from a teacher that was on the NEAS committee, from the work that we did. They, the probation stamp was removed from the work that we had did when I was there. The biggest success were the Career Academies. The biggest success there was, it was done by teachers. You know, we looked at core twenty-first century skills. One thing about Waymouth High School, a lot of sharp teachers, the content was there, the program of study had some really great courses. But the problem was that it wasn't really organized in a way that really made sense. So, what we did, we embarked on a campaign to, how can we bring it into the twenty-first century? A math and science academy, a fine arts academy, you have, we had a business and entrepreneurship academy. So, we brought in these different academies, and, and some of my experience comes from that world of developing small schools and academies. That was, that was a big accomplishment, and it was great to see that they have continued with those academies, and it has been sustained over time. Another accomplishment that I would say that was probably one of the tougher ones, when I entered into Waymouth High School, if you're not familiar with Waymouth, they also have career and technical education at the school. The students, unfortunately, they were tracking kids. They had a level that was not college preparatory, a level they had, they called it academic, and then college prep. When you look at mass reform law, this was very, this was unacceptable. And that's something that I knew I had to take on right away. When students enter into a high school, they should be given the opportunity, if they want it or not, on a college preparatory track. So, embarking on changing the entire program of study to align with new Career Academies, plus eliminating an academic track. It was tough, because it was part of something that had been ingrained in that culture for a while. Long story short, after my first year, the second year, we start, started with the lowest level was college prep, no more tracking for students. That was a big accomplishment. I mentioned that, you know, made AYP for the first time in four years. I can't take all the credit for that, because teachers had been working before I got there. I was there as a leader and allowed some of the work that some had been wanting to do. And, and they did it. They, it was, it was a big focus on special education, 'cause that's where we were missing the mark. We had a very sharp spec coordinator. In the following year after making AYP, we created resource room, something they never had, to really support special education in a different way. So, those are some. The Career Academies were big, eliminating tracking, of course, AYP, and a big one is getting us off the probation list for accreditation.
This is a question from the community.
Thank you.
So, this is a question from the community. It was reported in your last budget in Marlboro that, that Marlboro didn't have hard numbers until May, and no real numbers until the eve of the school committee vote. Is this, was this reported accurately? And how, and if so, how would you manage the process differently in Wareham?
I'll give the quick, no, it wasn't reported accurately. When I was in Marlboro, unfortunately, and you've heard me say this, we made a lot of progress in Marlboro. STEM Academy, developing the curriculum, curriculum frameworks, bringing different foreign language to the middle school, bringing back athletics to the middle school, I can name some more. Unfortunately, when you push a reform agenda, sometimes politics gets in the way. And that's what I was facing toward the end of my tenure in Marlboro. To give you an example, the first year, there was actually comments, this has been the easiest budget process ever. We made up the 1.6 million, we made sure we gave the state back their, I mean, the city back their dollars, and then we corrected the special education mistake that was underbudgeted in a budget that I inherited. So, we zeroed out at the end of the year. The second year, we zeroed out as well. It was a balanced budget at the end of the year. We had real numbers, but I think politics played a major role in some of those misrepresentation of what we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have about a couple of minutes for any follow-up questions. Does a member have a follow-up question? Did everybody else have a second question? Yep, okay. Let me go to Mike first.
Just for a follow-up question?
Yes, please.
Just in answering, I forget whose question it was, you said that you're not moving your children again. Like, that's, you're emphatic about that. But did I read correctly that you were a recent finalist down in Polk County, Florida?
No, that's just how misrepresentations kinda get out. I found out I was moving to Florida one day, and I didn't even know it.
Okay.
No, I will say, I, I did apply to Florida, and that was one of those situations where my mother-in-law and father-in-law lived thirty minutes from Polk County, Florida. So, it was one of those situations.
was one of those situations where you do it, but no, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Another follow-up question?
Yep.
Jeff Lysick's gonna answer.
Yeah, that's fine.
I thought your answer to Mr. Flaherty was an artful dodge. And because while it may be policy, this, this committee likes to hear the recommendations of our superintendent before we enact policy so we don't trip over ourselves and do, and have unintended negative consequences. With respect to the issue of academic eligibility for sports, what would you specifically recommend to this committee? Would you recommend that we use the MIAA standards? What did you do at Marlboro? Were they, were they the MIAA standards or higher? And if they, if they were the superintendent's, excuse me, if they were the school committee's policy, did you agree with it? I want you to commit to something with respect to this issue.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. The process that I explained in the question is the process that I will follow. And I will definitely give the school committee my opinion. I think that the MIAA standard is a minimum and only a minimum. I believe that standards should be much higher than that. If we are expecting students to be lifelong learners, to be successful, what message are we sending them? But if I'm saying I want standards to be higher than MIAA, and that's what I am saying, is that what are we putting in place? How are we working with the athletic director and the coaches to make sure that we have other things in place where we're not totally separating students from that social interaction? Because the many, the majority of the time, it's more about that social interaction than it is about being on the football field or the basketball team. So I think, if you want me to commit, I say I think the standard should be higher than MIAA. I think if we are gonna allow our kids to play sports, they need to be academically successful first.
So they shouldn't be able to pass, excuse me, fail a course and play?
I think they should be, yes. I think they should be able to participate in different ways, but as far as playing, I think the standard should be much higher.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a follow-up on getting back to Waymouth. You made a statement, I just need to have this clear in my own mind. And you said you were invited for a two-year gig, is that correct? So you knew what the outside was gonna be two years, is that correct?
It was a three-year contract. And that's the, I think, the minimum as far as principals in Massachusetts. But it was one of those side conversations that the superintendent knew that I wanted to be a superintendent in Massachusetts. It was that time in my career. And coming back from Texas, you know, I was an executive director for curriculum instruction, which is akin to an assistant soup for curriculum. I was a finalist for the assistant superintendent position. And we had that conversation, our high school really needs some help right now. And at the time, some people, even some of my mentors questioned me, why would you, you've been assistant soup, assistant soup, now you're gonna go back and be a principal?
Principals are great.
What's that?
Principals are great.
Absolutely. I think it's the best job around. You're around kids all day. So it was an opportunity for me to do something good. And I said, you know, if I can give you two years, I'm probably gonna start applying to superintendent jobs in two years. And I did. And I got a great recommendation from her.
Thank you.
Dr. Phob, if you could just make a final statement, and then I'll let you know a little about the process. So thank you.
I wanna first just thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for your questions. I just wanna comment on the process. I think the process is very clean for me as far as, you know, from start to finish. I think I can bring a leadership style here to Wareham that gets things done. I think I'm the type of leader that does collaborate. I've spent a lot of my career, as you can see, taking on challenges. So if there are challenges, I'm very seasoned to do it. But I am also a great listener. And I think I can bring the leadership of collaboration, the skill and know-how to tap into the leadership that already exists in the district. Because my guess is, there's a lot of talented people here that can help build whatever needs to be built here. So I look forward to the opportunity if I am selected as superintendent in Wareham. And I look forward to speaking with you more.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So the process, we're doing the final interviews tonight. Next Tuesday, the school committee will need to meet in executive session just to talk about personnel issues regarding the finalist for the superintendent position. We're gonna be talking about the process after that. Hopefully, we'll be able to reconvene, do deliberation in open session, and then Michael will make the final decision next week.
Is that Tuesday night?
Probably, well, I have to check with this group, but I'll be recommending Wednesday.
I see. Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. We will be taking a recess until 8:20 PM. Thank you.
Hey, great. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you again for tuning in, I hope, and live blogging. We are back to interview our final candidate for the superintendent position for the Wareham School System, Ms. Kimberly Shaver-Hood from the Blackstone Mills School System. So thank you very much for being here. I commented, commented to you outside that the person that had the longest commute is our, our last candidate. But again, I just wanna thank you for being here tonight, kind of talk to you a little bit about the process. So if you can, if you could just open up with an opening statement, that would be great.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate being invited back to Wareham. And as you've had an opportunity to review my resume, visit my district, and visit with various members of my school community, I would like to take this opportunity to share with you a little bit more about my beliefs and my leadership style. Education is my passion. For me, being a superintendent is not an eight-to-five job. It's a job that has no start time and no end time. I'm strongly committed to students-first, academic rigor, improving school culture, and I'm committed to excellence for all students. As a superintendent, it's my responsibility to communicate effectively with all stakeholders, but also listen to what the stakeholders have to say and share that information within our school network. My number-one priority is, and will continue to be, students-first. And creating the culture of excellence is my desire and my passion. I thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. So the first question will come from Mr. Swett.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Teachers, professors, at all levels, spend their lives differentiating between the performances of students, mostly using tests, but are generally uncomfortable with the idea of using test data as the basis for judging their own performance. Given this incongruous inconsistency, please explain to the committee and the citizens of Wareham why the evaluation of public school teachers has been so poorly done in the past, what do you believe are the unique circumstances that make improvement of the evaluation process so difficult, and how you would make sure it is done well in Wareham Public Schools?
Okay. In the past, I believe our evaluation system in education really has been drop-in, see what's going on, exit and write the evaluation. There's been very little time really spent in the classroom, looking at teaching, working with the teachers. But more importantly, I believe there's not been clearly established goals, clearly established what we're looking for, what's our vision, and how does our teaching and learning tie to our vision and working with students. You know, in a principal's day, it's very busy. You never know what's going to happen. And it's also the principal that's in charge of doing the evaluation. And for many principals, having effective evaluation techniques, training, never occurred. And so for us, when we evaluate teachers, it's not on the same playing field. What the principals look for maybe hasn't been communicated to the teachers. I read a report, it was, I think it was in three, three days ago, out of the Boston paper. There were 5,000 teachers that did not receive evaluations for a period of time. And when you have a culture where we're not effectively evaluating, sharing what's good practice, it's very difficult to improve instruction. This new evaluation tool changes the culture. It changes what we're looking for. And when you do walkthroughs, when you walk into a classroom five, five to 10 times during the school year, you get the snapshot of truly what's going on. The other piece that I believe that this evaluation system does is it has a rubric, and it clearly establishes what we're looking for. The other piece, though, is communication and articulation with our teachers. And how do we define rigor? How do we define accountability? And how do we define effective teaching practices? And those are all prerequisites that must occur if we're going to have truly effective evaluation systems. I believe in the state of Massachusetts, now, they have said, we have to have professional development. That's a wonderful start, but it doesn't stop there. We need to continue. We need to grow, and we need to develop this. I believe the third part of your question, or someplace in there, was about why is it so difficult to change? Well, education really has remained the same for many, many, many years. And change is very hard. You know, I have to admit, as I was walking into the building, I must have come into the wrong door, and I was kind of lost. And so I met this wonderful teacher, and she, I said, do you know where the auditorium is? And so she very graciously guided me to the auditorium. And during the time, our brief walked down, she said, I'm really nervous about what's happening. And I think that capsulizes what people feel in education. There's a lot of change happening. And part of our job as educators is to make sure that everybody has the same information, we're working from the same rubric, and it's not punitive. We want to improve instruction. We want to improve education. And it's all about working collaboratively and together. And that's really, I think, the difference with this teacher evaluation system and how it's going to impact teaching and learning. So I hope I answered your question. And if I didn't, please, I'd be happy to, to work at it again.
Thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
People who are involved in the education profession experience successes, they experience failures, and some more public than private. Embracing the growth mindset that all students and teachers are capable of growth through dedication and effort. Describe your professional talents as they work in progress. What are your plans and strategies for challenging your growth mindset? And how would this be useful and constructive in your role as superintendent of Wareham Public Schools?
I'm a lifelong learner, and I'm in the final stage of completing my doctorate. I'm in the dissertation writing stage. I've completed my courses. And I have to say that I'm really rather disappointed because I, I've enjoyed going to classes. I've enjoyed the rigor. I've enjoyed having those exchanges with my peers. And so I'm always looking for different ways to improve, different ways to network, different ways to learn. In fact, I just received acceptance today for the National Superintendent's Program, and I will be joining that cohort and moving forward into that this summer. And so I'm always looking to better myself. But I really think we have a wealth of knowledge in our schools, and tapping the knowledge with our teachers and with our students, I learn something new every day. And so one of the things that I like to do as superintendent is to join teacher groups, listen to what they have to say, listen to what our kids are saying to us and what our parents are saying, because I learn from that. And when I don't know answers to questions, or it perks something up, and I think, well, that's really interesting, I need to go look that up and research that. It provides me opportunity for growth. It provides me opportunity to share information. And I believe some of our best educators are right here in our four walls, and we just need to tap them because they can share. And that's what we have to celebrate.
Thank you.
Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay. A recent district review of Wareham Public Schools by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education concluded, among other things, that learning isn't as rigorous as it should be in our district. In fact, the matter of rigor was referenced 11 times in the 58-page report that we received this past March. With this in mind, currently, Wareham students who participate in school sports at the high school are allowed to fail one of their courses and yet still continue playing school sports. Many parents find this policy unacceptable. They point to the fact that other Wareham students who happen to attend the regional vocational school are not allowed to fail any courses at all if they wish to play sports. Do you think it is an unreasonable expectation to have students of Wareham Public Schools pass all of their classes if they wish to participate in school sports?
Well, truth be known, I don't think any students should fail. I think success breeds success. And I think that should be our mission. We should do whatever it takes. Now, I know that's probably not a realistic expectation, but I still do believe all students need to achieve. I'm not sure that this, well, certainly you understand, this is not an easy question to answer. I think that the ultimate question comes, why are we asking this? And what is our goal? Is our goal to improve academic rigor for athletes or academic rigor for all our students? And if the goal is to improve academic rigor for all our students, then we need to be able to set high benchmarks and hold everybody accountable. If it's to improve academic rigor for our athletes, then really what we're saying is, to be an athlete, we're going to hold you to higher standards for graduation than the regular student. And so if we're going to do that, then we need to be prepared to support them, to have supports in place to ensure that they're successful. When you look at high school sports, you know, everybody thinks that they're gonna be the next Division One player, or they're going to go pro, or something like that. And I think in 2004, 983,000 students played football. Out of that, 56,000 went on to play college sports. And out of that, 0.9% went on to the pros. So truly, we are not in the business of pro athletes or even college athletes. What we're in the business of is educating students. And so when we educate students, we need to ensure that all our students receive an education that will equip them for the 21st century. And so when you ask me, do I think that it's fair to hold students, athletes, to a higher standard? I think we need to hold all our students to a higher standard. But if we're going to hold our student athletes to one, then we need to be prepared to support them and to ensure that we've done everything possible to help them be successful.
Ms. Chair, may I clarify?
Uh, no, I'm gonna go ahead.
Okay.
It was definitely enough.
Yeah, sure.
Just waiting for you to finish your drink.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your kindness.
How would you organize this district curriculum-wise so that you can guarantee student academic improvement?
When you look at this, a district, it's a K-12 district. And so what we need And so what we need to ensure is that our curriculum is flowing. We have vertical and horizontal articulation, and that it moves. So our students are, are challenged as they move through the system. When you look at organizing the curriculum, we need to make sure that we have pieces in place, curriculum maps. Our teachers have the, the materials that they need to be successful. We have rigor. We have clearly outlined our standards. We've matched our curriculum to the standards. When we look at moving our system to a K-12 system, then we have to be willing to break down the walls that exist in between classrooms, between teachers, and we need to work collaboratively. We also need to make sure that we have clear leadership, and what is good instruction? And we need to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Everything we do needs to match the vision. Everything we do needs to match our goals. And so when we look at, at a K-12 curriculum, meeting the standards, putting pieces in place for our students to be successful, we need to ask hard questions. We need to be willing to listen to the answers. But more importantly, we need to be able to support the teachers and our students.
Thank you.
There's distrust among some citizens of Wareham, including parents, with how schools are spending money. What have you done in your last position to increase the level of confidence in the budget and fight or work with district leadership to bring on new resources?
Well, you know, part of the dilemmas that we face in public education, they're not from natural disasters. They're from less resources with people competing for resources. And so I do not see in the, any time in the near future that we're going to have a plethora of funds in education. And so I think what we need to do as educators is to be very frugal, to look at what we do, but also to be able to be objective in how we budget. So what we, what I've done is, we're certainly looking at this as an investment in our community. And it's not merely supporting education, but we want to change the mindset into, "You're investing in our kids' education." And so we need to work together. When we budget, we certainly are very open about having communication with people, looking at where the resources are going, how do we support education, answering any questions, and being able to say, "This is why we're spending money. This is the outcome, and this is what we expect in return." And when you have those kind of open and honest conversations with people, you then slowly begin to establish the trust. You know, I visit PTOs. I visit the Board of Selectment. I visit the Finance Committee. And believe me, they ask for all kinds of documents. They ask for where we're spending money, what we're getting in, how is this going? What's this? What's our revenue? But if we cannot clearly share where it is, then there is mistrust. And so I work very hard at being able to say to them, "Here's where our money is. Here's what we have, and here's how it's being spent." We also look at projections over time. And so if I look at my grant history, or I look at my revenue history, or I look at line-by-line history, I need to be able to show where the money is and how it's been spent over time. It needs to be transparent. It needs to be open, and we need to be able to say, "Here it is. This is what we have, and this is how we're spending it." When you act like you don't know what you're doing, or you're kind of fumbling around, then of course mistrust occurs. And so we work very hard. I work very hard at being open. I work very hard at sharing the information, and we invite people in. We invite people to the table. We're willing to answer questions. The other thing is, I think, as our revenues are getting shorter, we have to be very creative. We certainly have tapped higher ed to go into partnerships with us. We're looking at B.C. right now for a partnership with RTI. We have WPI coming in to work with our, our middle school students on a STEAM program. We're looking, working with the University of Colorado. So we're all the time looking at, "How do we increase our sources and our resources for our students, but at no cost?" And so I think we have to be very creative that way. We have to make sure that when we budget, we, we look at other options. We look at grants. We look at, "How do we generate revenue? How do we generate resources without passing it back to the taxpayer?" So those are some things that I've done in my district, and certainly will continue to do that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Thanks. Now, at the site visit, I found out you're a triathlete. You're involved in a lot of things, a lot of time in the community. You have been known to be active in your community with school functions and things of that nature. Without living in the district in Wareham, will that present a problem of your, your activities in the community?
No, because if I am appointed as the superintendent, I will be moving to Wareham, because I think being involved in the community is essential. I think being a familiar face, knowing what's going on, and being able to interact with the stakeholders, I need to do that. And so I, that's a commitment that I would make.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thanks. The communities of Blackstone and Millville have been, have proven to be increasingly frugal with respect to support for the Blackstone Millville School District. That was gleaned from the site visit. Has the lack of financial support led to frustration and a desire to leave your current position? If so, how can this committee and the parents and children of Wareham be sure that a similar level of frugality in Wareham won't cause your premature departure? If not, since almost every cut in a school, directly or indirectly, impacts students, what service areas do you consider most important to students? And what school-based services are more likely to face cuts during a neighborhood superintendency?
Multi-questions. Okay. I will, I may need to ask you to come back to some of them. Is it frustrating and disheartening? Absolutely. Because what I translate, lack of dollars, lack of services for students. And being a cheerleader, a champion of students, that really bothers me when I have to potentially cut services for our kids. Is that what's causing me to look? Absolutely not. I, I look at Wareham as an opportunity, an advancement, and so that's not at all the, how frugal Blackstone is. I think every community in Massachusetts, or actually in the United States, is frugal anymore. And if they're not, they will be soon. So when I look at cuts, what do I look at and what's my priority? My priority is to keep certain teachers in front of children. And so I look at everything I can possibly reduce, other than teachers and staff that work directly with students. And I can give you a couple of examples of that, what I've cut. I've cut my administrative assistant. I cut that position several years ago. Don't worry, though. Because that position saved a teacher. We've cut other people in central office because it saved teaching staff. I look very closely at my budget lines. I look at all the contract services. I look at heating. I look at electric. I look at, at everything that I can possibly reduce, to reduce, to keep teachers and supplies in front of students. Cuts here is the third part of your question, I believe. What would I look at here in Wareham?
No.
No, okay. One of the other things that I also look at, though, is our special education services. And can I bring students back from out of district if I create programs in-house? And we've been pretty successful about creating some programs in-house and bringing students back. And because of that, you know, we've saved several hundred thousands of dollars over a course of time. We've also looked at providing our own transportation with some of our students, and so we purchased some vehicles in order to do that, and that's saved money. So when I look at making cuts, I look at, it may be painful to some of us, but if, if I can keep resources in front of students, that's my goal.
Thank you.
Ms. Sylvia?
You've kind of answered this question, but I'll let you expand on it if you want.
Okay.
In your letter of interest, you stated, "As superintendent is my," and this is a quote, "As superintendent is my charge to support, promote, and cultivate pathways for academic rigor in excellence." With some degree of specificity, as superintendent, describe some of your initial strategies for increasing rigor and closing the achievement gap.
I really think that when we look at increasing rigor and closing the achievement gap, we need to look at what areas we're going to target. And then we need to have clear benchmarks and clear assessments on a, on a very specific timeline. And we need to target what areas we're looking at. It, it's vital to have the data. It's vital to look at the data, and truly, data should be driving our instruction. It's no more random, hit and miss, and just teaching what we like to teach. We need to be very specific. It, it's an order. When we look at improving student achievement, I believe it's vital that our kids know how to read by second grade, and we need to put supports in place to ensure that that happens. I also think that we need to look district-wide, because when you look at successful districts, you don't have one school or two schools. It's a district. And so anytime we look at improving districts, improving test scores, improving data, anything, it needs to be a district-wide initiative. And we need to work together for the collaboration.
Thank you.
If you were to become the next superintendent of Wareham Public Schools, how long do you think it would realistically take for you to move our district from its current Level III status?
Realistically, I would tell you probably two to three years. But I would also share with you, you will see significant improvement during year one. And part of that is, we're going to work together, and it's a collaboration. I truly believe that the teachers are the most important people in our schools, because they are what drive student achievement. And so if you have solid teaching, if you have teaching bell-to-bell, if you have differentiated instruction, if you have people using effective teaching practices, we will see change occurring. I also truly believe in building bridges with people, building bridges with student, because we have to create a climate and a culture that students want to be here. They want to achieve, and they want to be successful. Yeah. I'm very concerned when I see attendance rates falling, when I see a discipline rates, and when I see dropout rates. And so what that tells me is, I need to look at student engagement. And so once we start the engagement process with our students and our community, things turn around. The other piece that I would share with you is, I truly believe in celebrations. I believe in making small victories, because small victories then turn into larger victories. And we need to take care of our, our most vital commodity, and that's students, and that's our teachers. And so we do everything we can to support them, work with them, and make sure everybody's successful.
Thank you.
This is a question from the community. Blackstone is a district with, in their feeling, much more money than Wareham, and much less diversity than Wareham. How would you be ready to handle the challenges Wareham faces?
Okay. Well, you know, I wish that that was true, as far as the more money. You know, I, I don't think that anything we do anymore, we really have to be frugal. We have to look at how we spend money. We have to, it's, it's a saying I have, "We have to get on the balcony." And we have to be able to look at everything objectively and make sure that we're making wise purchases and wise spending, because our job is to support our kids. Now, as far as with diversity, you know, I've had the distinct pleasure of working in a variety of schools. I've worked in inner-city schools. I've worked in very high-income schools. And so I've had a, a wealth of experience. And so to me, having the diversity, I've been there, and, and this would be nothing new.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up questions from the committee? I think that, yeah, Mike?
Sure. Thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify on my earlier question regarding school sports. Judging from the reactions I've gotten tonight, I should have been more broad and expanded it to, you know, anything, I guess, extracurricular. Basically, if, if, if student grades are suffering, do they really have any business, you know, being in, in sports? And so I guess, I guess my, my question is, do you, do you think it's unrealistic? I'm sorry. Do you think it's, do you think it's an unreasonable expectation to have students of Wareham Public Schools pass all of their classes if they wish to participate in extracurricular activities?
Okay. From a personal standpoint, I think absolutely kids need to pass their courses. And as a coach, because I coached, my children were athletes, I was an athlete, and you need to pass, because truly, we probably are not going to be professional athletes. We are going to be in the workforce. We need our education. Education is very, very important, and if you don't have a solid education, it's tough. And so I think our job is to promote excellence. Our job is to promote success. And if that means as a coach, I need to sit down with the student and have a study table, if I need to sit down and have my clear expectations, but to ensure that our kids are being successful, absolutely, that's what I need to do. The other thing, though, it's a mindset. And so when we cultivate excellence, I don't think any student should fail. And I think we should do whatever we can as educators to ensure the success of kids. You know, my son happened to be a Division One athlete. And I will tell you, the rigor, the academic challenge, it's very hard. And so if our athletes think that they're going to be able to move into the college ranks and compete, it's not going to happen. And so I think it's our job as educators to say to them, "You've got to get a good education. You need to pass your courses, because that's really what counts."
Thank you very much for your candor.
Jeff, you had a follow-up question?
I'd like to go back to evaluations. I don't know about you, but I always get really annoyed when someone comes out on a, on a dais and says something like, "Mistakes were made." Never, "I made a mistake." Just, "Mistakes were made." Some, you know, out in the cosmos, mistakes were made. If evaluations were poorly done in the past, and I think you acknowledged that, whose fault is it?
Well, I suppose, who wrote those evaluations? If I wrote the evaluation and it was poorly done, then it's my fault.
But if the entire system is doing it poorly?
Yeah.
Doesn't that make you wonder about why the entire system was doing it poorly?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure about that, but what I will say to you, I think sometimes in education, we take shortcuts, and we tell ourselves, we're so busy, we have all these things to do, and we might not want to go up against the union, we might not want to upset a teacher, we might not really spend the time that we need to as administrators in a classroom. Well, you know what? That's our fault, and that's the administrator's fault. And truly, that's our fault as in education. Because what changes academic achievement, teacher instruction. And so, if you have poor teacher instruction, we're not going to see academic achievement. And so, for us to step back and say, you know, we've really not done a good job here, we need to do better, we need to have clear evaluations that clearly articulate what we expect from our teachers in terms from our students. You know, I, I liken this to a test. If I was a student and I received some of the tests as some of, perhaps, I'll be honest, some of the evaluations I've written in my past, I would be totally lost and think, what am I supposed to do with this, and how am I supposed to answer this? Because it really doesn't ask me anything, there's no clarity, there's no, there's nothing, there's no substance. And so, it's time in education that we step back, we look at providing our teachers with effective feedback. But it's not all about the administrator in this, it's about the teacher too, because the teacher has ownership. It needs to be a collaboration, and our teachers really need to work with every, with us and with the teaching staff to move education forward, and really to promote effective teaching. And so, when I look at evaluations now, I look at it with a much more critical eye, because I understand the importance of what it truly means. And I understand that truly, when you walk into a room and you see excellent teaching, it's almost mystical, because it just happens, and it's beautiful, it's just beautiful to watch. And when you walk into a classroom that it's just not working, you know it. And for us as educators, it's time to say, this is how we can improve, this is how I can help you, I need to coach you, I want to coach you, I want you to do better. And so, I think that's really our, our response now, we need to move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a follow-up question. One of the things that you said was that it's important for you to move to the community where you're superintendent at, and be visible. Can you talk a little bit about the community that you're in now, and examples of how you're visible in that community?
Sure. Yeah, I live about 20 minutes away from my community. Some days, if there's no traffic, I can get there much sooner, and I know really where the police hide, as I've shared. And so, being a part of the community is very important, because, you know, what I really like to do is drive down the road, and I get a really big kick out of people waving at me, because that means I know people, and I'm part of the community. Because when I have that kind of a connection, then people talk to me, and I have all these underground networks, and, and, you know, some people joke, she knows when a pencil hits the floor. Well, I really don't know when a pencil hits the floor. But I have that kind of a relationship, that if something really is going on, I'll know about it. If I'm not in the community, I won't know. You know, recently, we had a, a student who, they lost their house in a fire. And it was a devastating fire, it was just in a flash, everybody was fine, we were very grateful for that. So, I went and got my principals, because there were, they, we had kids in two buildings, we went down, and we had conversations with the family, how can we help you, what do you need? When your kids get back to school, don't worry about anything, we'll have stuff there for you, we'll have all their school stuff. So, it's that kind of a community spirit that I really think is very important to create. And if I live 15 minutes away, I can't create that, and I need to be able to do that, because it, it's very important to me to be engaged. I have parent, I, the other day, I had a parent drop in just to see me, because he had something he wanted to talk about. Those kind of relationships can't be built if I'm not visible. And if I truly want to be part of a community, part of a district, and part of helping to move forward, then I have to be visible, because I am the educational leader, and I'm also the number-one cheerleader. And it doesn't serve the community well if I, your number-one cheerleader lives 15 minutes away.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions from the committee? Okay. If you could, just make a final statement, and then we'll talk a little bit about the best steps and process.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, you know, I'd really like to thank you for this opportunity. I know that I have what it would take to move Wareham forward, I believe in public education, I understand the importance of building bridges in the district and also in the community. I bring to the table experience from the school business side, a principal, a teacher, a guidance counselor, and a superintendent. So, I've worn various hats, and I know what the responsibilities are in the various roles. I have a tremendous passion for education, I believe that we put our children first and foremost in everything we do. And I look very much forward to taking this journey with you, so I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. So, as a committee, we're, this is the end of our superintendent finalist interviews. We are going to convene an executive session next Tuesday, because we just need to talk about personnel issues regarding the superintendent position. And then, we'll be coming out of that, the committee will be talking about it, but hoping next Wednesday, we'll deliberate and open session and make the final decision on that Wednesday night. That, but that still needs to be agreed on here. But that's, we're hoping to be able to have the decision by next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
We're going to take a short recess and then come back as a committee, just again, to discuss what next steps are. Thank you, Kristen.
You're the only one with institutional knowledge, I just don't need you.
I'll take superintendents for 20, please.
Okay, Kristine, you ready?
Oh, you're already back on.
Oh, gee.
You didn't pay him enough.
No, I didn't.
Go ahead.
Oh. Welcome back, everyone. We have concluded the interview for, for the Wareham Superintendent, we have completed the interviews for the finalist candidates for the Wareham Superintendent search. You all know that we've already, we posted it, that we do need, we will go into executive session just to talk about, you know, personnel issues, the site visits, but then, when it comes to deliberation about the candidates, I'd like to do that in open forum, and hopefully then get a vote at that meeting. So, what I would-
This on Tuesday?
This is on, no. So, Tuesday's executive session, and because we're meeting in the early-
Can't we have a regular meeting on Tuesday?
It's where we're having the meeting, we, and plus getting the community out, and right now, it's just too late to do it.
Just for a vote?
Right, but we need to do it in open session, we need to be able to be-
Why can't we have an open session meeting on Tuesday?
So, Tuesday's meeting at 7:30, well, first of all, right now, on Tuesday, it's not too late to post.
No, it isn't.
It's a Monday holiday?
Oh.
Yeah. So, then, it would be, so what I'm going to propose is that Wednesday at 6 o'clock, we meet, and that this is the only topic for discussion. So, we open, we deliberate, and what I would put is a possible vote. So, then, we have the ability to vote, but if there are any major concerns that come up, or if there, if the committee feels very, very strongly that we can't vote that night, I don't want it to be on there, so we will say possible vote. But I'm hoping and that, you know, as we go through on Tuesday and then get to Wednesday, that, you know, we have all of the information that we need, and we're able to make a decision on our next superintendent. So, but I'll ask the committee, if you are available on Wednesday at 6 o'clock, the only agenda item will be to deliberate on the finalist candidates for superintendent and possible vote.
Yes.
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 I don't know, I gotta check my phone box.
You didn't have it with you.
Wednesday- You should have seen him on our site visit with that thing.
Wednesday. The date is-
Ten minute.
Do you anticipate-
What's it minded at 7 o'clock?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Something's it minded at 7 o'clock on Wednesday.
June?
What is it? Yeah, I got that in my book.
Yeah, and she's, she's making us go, too.
Will you please excuse the school committee members?
Well, let's hope it's done by then.
She's gonna be really mad if we don't go, I'm serious.
It's at 7, it'll be a quick meeting. Do it at 6.
Right, I mean, I could ask the committee if they can be at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Be fine.
No.
Do it early. That's fine.
Okay.
Question about Tuesday morning.
Yes.
Will that include, um, discussion of a potential contract?
It's not on the, but, I mean, it's part of personnel issue, so it could.
Okay.
But not about each one of the candidates, but a contract in general.
Right.
Yes. So, Wednesday at 5:30?
Sure.
Yes? Ken? Okay, so we can get to a concert? Okay. All right, so, Michelle, if you could post for the school committee next Wednesday, 5:30 PM here, if possible, if it's available? Hi, is there any other business? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Some vote.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.